Welcome to the July 10th Town Council Work Session. I would ask that, I mean, I'm sorry, regular meeting of the Abingdon Town Council. At this time, I would ask that you make sure all your cellphones are silenced. If you are here to speak and you did not sign up, I'm going to give you one last minute to sign up if you want to speak. You can come forward and put your name on the signup sheet. Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Craig.
Here.
Ms. Patterson.
Here.
Mr. Howard.
Here.
Mr. Humphries.
Here.
Mayor Loeb.
Here. And we have a special treat tonight. We are going to have a posting of the colors and the National Anthem by the Abingdon Buster Grounds Music Group. Please stand.
Now, if everyone will join me in the pledge allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the municipal, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We are down to the approval of minutes, council. We have, I'm sorry, before we do that, I want to take one moment to express our deep sympathy to Deb Eisenhower, who lost her brother this past weekend, and let her know that we are thinking about her and we're sorry that she's not able to be with us tonight. Now, I will ask council for the approval of minutes, June 5th work session, June 5th regular meeting minutes, and June 12th mid-month work session minutes. Council, what's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve all three unless somebody has any collections.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Craig.
Ah.
Ms. Patterson.
Aye.
Mr. Howard.
Aye.
Mr. Humphries.
Aye.
Mayor Loeb.
Aye. Okay. Now, we have two items, or two people who would like to speak. So, give me just one second. At this time, council will hear a public comment from those citizens registered to speak. Please come forward to the podium as your name is called. Restate your name, state your address, and identify any organization you represent. Each speaker will have three minutes for comments. Each speaker will be limited to, and be timed by the town clerk, once your comments begin, and you will be given a cue when one minute of speaking time remains. Speakers are reminded that neither council members or staff will address questions or otherwise engage with speakers during the public comment period. And our first speaker is Mr. Barry Proctor.
My name is Barry Proctor. I live at 927 Woodlawn Terrace here in the town of Abingdon. I'm speaking as a citizen of the town tonight. We live in very contentious times. People find themselves on council daisies, or in legislative bodies, or on benches, and they are sitting side by side with people who have political views that came from the other side of the universe. And yet, they're called upon to sit together and try to work things out as best they can. And each of you here tonight has gotten to where you are by the same process. You went through an election. The citizens of the community decided you were the best person to sit and serve in those positions and make decisions for this town. And every one of you have earned that honor and that right. What disturbs me here tonight is that this letter, that everyone is aware of now, that came back from Judge Johnson, informed at least two of the members of activity that was going on that they weren't aware of. And the concern there is that if this body is going to have some open forum to discuss things and get things done, they don't, Ms. Patterson and Mr. Craig, and perhaps you at other times, don't need to find out that what the other three have done, or what the other two have done, by getting a letter back from a judge in response to a letter that was sent, we think improperly, to a judge, and asking for an advisory opinion. Well, I think there are other ways to deal with those issues that help the body to advance and not to digress. So, when I was asked out here by the people from the press here tonight, what I thought should come out of this, my answer is a heads up for everybody. Not where we've been necessarily, but where we go, and how we work together, how open we are, how clear we are with each other in what we do. And if that happens, this is going to be a better place. If it doesn't, we're going to be in the same jumble come next year and the year after. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Kenneth D. Day?
D.
Okay.
My name's Kenneth D. I'm a resident of 239 Old Eleven Drive, Abingdon, Virginia. Council, I appreciate opportunity to speak before you. This is one of those things, the more you come to light, the less you like what you find out, especially with the facts that's there. I've been a resident here since 1993, and I used to have a lot of pride in the fact that I was from this town. I'm the last of four boys that reside here, and reason being is they weren't able to find substantial work within their skills that would provide financially for their I have three kids that are in the school system here, and I want to be able to enjoy my kids when they are out of school and looking for work, and when they have kids that are here. And part of that's open government and being involved in what's going on locally. I'm a volunteer in miscellaneous agencies in different places here locally, and have been since I was a juvenile. And I know my statement is, what I wanted to say is dramatically changed since I've walked through the door this evening, obviously. This isn't supposed to be a conspiracy. I've been in positions and jobs where I've had to read body language and a lot of things, and what I've walked through the door and seen tonight, I don't see any shame, or guilt, or anything about anything that's happened tonight. And each of you, to me, are in one of the most respected positions that this town has to offer, and I'm ashamed. I'd give anything to be in a seat and be a part of my kids' futures, all of these people's kids' futures, and be a team player and a team member. I've got people that work for me that don't like me, but we're a team, and it just doesn't seem like that's what's going on here. So, I don't know how anybody else feels about, you know, what's going on with Ms. Patterson or anybody else, you know, the issues there. But I feel like we should be an open government, where everyone's in the know, things easily found online with our tax increases and our changes there, and we're throwing a lot of money at different projects that I'm not seeing how there's going to be a return for, and I'm concerned about that. Even tonight, the $192,000 that's being requested, you know, with our IT department, how are our kids going to pay for that? How are we going to pay for that? That's the here and now. I'm looking at the long-term problem, and I've got a lot of worries. You guys are supposed to be the best that we have to look up to? I'm scared. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Ken, are you Marvin Cycles, Benson?
Yes, sir, I am.
So, please stick around to whether we have our comments, and I'll try to address them here.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Petitions and public hearings and first reading of ordinances, the public hearing to enact an ordinance, Chapter 18 Business, Article 2, licenses, Section 18-35 through 18-40 of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Abingdon, Virginia. Deb Eisenhower is not here, so I'm going to ask Mr. Kelly to talk about this ordinance, please.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Mayor, members of council, as we discussed earlier in the work session, this is the ordinance that's commonly referred to as the homestay ordinance. This past year, the General Assembly enacted legislation that would allow local governments to impose rules and regulations on people who own property that they rented rooms out, similar to B&Bs and hotels. What the ordinance requires is that they have to jump through the same or similar hoops as hotels and B&Bs, and ultimately have to get a business license and will be subjected to the lodging tax that the Town of Abingdon imposes upon lodging places. It also categorizes, puts two types of categories within the ordinance. The first is Type A, which allows for someone to have people in their residence for up to 30 days as a maximum. And then, the second one is if the person does not reside in the residence, then there is a maximum number of days totaling 90 that they can use to rent out during any one-year period at time. So, what you have before you is the ordinance, which is the first step for us to be able to get the business licenses of all the people who are participating in homestay, or another common name for that is the Airbnb. And it also allows us to put restrictions such as having properties inspected on a regular basis, much like we do all the other businesses in the town. Now, because this is a new regulation, we have sent out notices to all the folks that we know are actively involved in this. There are some that we probably do not know that are involved, that we will diligently try to discover and send them the information. So, this is, the application process has a grace period until October 1st before we have to, before the individuals have to actually come in and get everything in place for this. Because it is new legislation, and to put everything on an equal scale, if after hearing public comments, the council is inclined to adopt the ordinance, I would strongly recommend that we adopt the ordinance by suspending the second reading of the ordinance and adopt it immediately tonight.
Okay. So, before we open the public hearing, I'm going to read the ordinance of the Council of the Town of Abingdon to enact Chapter 18 Business, Article 6, 18-35 through 18-40, Homestay Regulations. Whereas online brokers, marketplaces for travel and hospitality platforms such as Airbnb, Craigslist, HomeAway, and all have been in existence in the United States for nearly a decade, and use of same has grown potentially, and has begun to affect both global and local short-stay rental markets. And whereas being aware of same, the Council of the Town of Abingdon, Virginia, has become concerned that its local hotels, motels, and bed and breakfast establishments are being treated unfairly by being subjected to collecting and remitting municipal lodging taxes, as well as being required to meet demands for business licensure, safety, and insurance requirements, while affiliates of said hospitality platforms or homestay are not. And whereas town officials have identified a considerable number of active homestay properties which are available on marketplace sites, have collected a list of same, and have begun the contact process to introduce the ordinance to those who will be affected with instructions on compliance. And whereas the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Virginia has finally settled with a satisfactory statute on this matter, after working the past several sessions to come up with a legislative product that would guide, enable, and authorize its local governments to better add equality to the hospitality playing field by devising and planning its strategy for organizing and managing local homestay operations in the interest of health, safety, and welfare of citizens and tourists of the Commonwealth and localities respectively. And whereas the Council of the Town of Abingdon, Virginia desires to join and participate in imposing a statewide scheme to support its business model and demonstrate to the General Assembly of the Commonwealth its ability to manage at the local level. And whereas this local government ordinance authorized through passage of bills through the Virginia House and Senate, namely House Bill 1268 and Senate Bill 1578, during the 2017 legislative session and signed into law by Governor McAuliffe in March of 2017, has been drafted to add to the Code of Ordinances for the Town of Abingdon by its council and shall be placed within Chapter 18 Business, Article 6, 18-35 through 18-40. And whereas Virginia localities need to utilize this authority successfully because continued future attempts in the legislature will be made to preempt local authority to manage. As used in this article, unless the context requires a different meaning, the terms are defined, and I'm not going to read all of the terms, but the terms are, is this going to be online? Let's put this online. So, all of the terms will be online, and the registration and other requirements will be online, the safety requirements will be online, the use regulations, and the registration suspension or cancelization, and the penalty of not complying with the homestay ordinance. I'm going to open the public hearing. Would anybody like to speak about the homestay ordinance as I read? Again, would anyone like to speak in reference to the homestay ordinance? And for the third time, would anyone like to speak in reference to the homestay ordinance? Okay. Public hearing is closed. Council, what's your pleasure?
I think as Mr. Kelly alluded to, Blacksburg is the first locality in the state to have adopted this, and we would be number two. I think it does allow the, a level playing field with our motel, hotels we have in town already, bed and breakfast, for that matter. So, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve this ordinance as presented, and suspend with any second read, just make it effective.
Okay.
10-1, October 1st.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay. Roll call, please. Is, wait, is there any discussion?
There is just, there's a, we have a statement to read, and I know I do anyway, and that is, and that is, is this is on a personal interest in the transaction, and as far as coia is concerned, and I want to certify that I am a group of three or more, and I'm able to participate and transact fairly, objectively, and in the public interest, Section 2.2-3, 112A, 2, and 315H.
And also, I'd like to explain to the public what coia is. Coia is conflict of interest, and I have a bed and breakfast as well, and it says here, if transaction applies to a group of three or more, and council member or employee is in that group, he or she may participate upon certifying that he or she is able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest, and that's Statute 223112A2, comma, 3115H.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
I'm Mr. Craig.
Ah.
Ms. Patterson.
Aye.
Mr. Howard.
Aye.
Mr. Humphries.
Aye.
Mayor Loeb.
Aye. Second reading, second reading of the ordinance of the Council of the Town of Abingdon, Virginia, proposing a real property tax increase for fiscal year 2017, 2018 with Greg R. W. Kelly, Town Manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of council, if you will recall, we had a public hearing last month, and first reading of the ordinance last month. This is not an actual increase in tax rate. It is basically an increase as a result of real estate taxes, tax assessments going up. And anytime that that happens, if the council elects to keep the additional revenue, it has to have a separate public hearing from the ordinance and adopt its own ordinance that it wishes to keep the additional revenue. So, what you have before you is the second reading, and if you vote to approve this, we will keep the increase in assessments on the tax rolls this year.
Okay. Any discussion? Council, what's your pleasure?
I move that we adopt the ordinance of the Council proposing a real estate tax increase for fiscal year 2017, 2018.
I have a second.
Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
I'm Mr. Craig.
Ah.
Ms. Patterson.
Aye.
Mr. Howard.
Aye.
Mr. Humphries.
Aye.
Mayor Loeb.
Aye. Consideration of bids, consideration of purchase of hyper-converged server storage upgrade and authorization of Town Manager to execute loan documents with First Bank and Trust in the amount of $192,000. Floyd Bailey.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Basically, what this request is, the town is facing an ever-increasing requirement for the retention of documents, retention of email, retention of video. What we are doing currently is, we have space that is running low, and we are needing to upgrade the storage. We have to keep what we already have, so we can't just throw away what we have, and we have to assimilate it into what is still yet to come. So, the $192,000 is a loan to purchase, and the equipment, which is all being purchased on state contract. So, we obtained this loan quote from First Bank and Trust, which equates to about a 1% loan.
Point 45.
Point 45. Thank you. Yeah. So, what we're asking you to do is, with the realization that we're really in a spot where we don't have a choice but to upgrade, my department and I, and CJ McGlaughlin has put in hours and hours on end shaving this and working this to the very best that the town can do to ensure the next five to 10 years of continued storage increase, projecting what we're currently doing, and with the expectation that it's going to be going up. So, this is, this loan will be taken, and due to the terms of the loan, we will not owe a payment until next fiscal year. So, this is a loan for today to carry us till next year. We'll owe one payment over five years of the next five years.
And how long do you anticipate that this storage will survive?
We are anticipating seven years. I'd love to squeeze more out.
Do you know how many documents that we store right now, approximately?
Well, we currently have about seven terabytes. So, this is going to give us 15 terabytes with a compression rate of about 22 terabytes. So, we're, it's continuing to increase. That's a lot of, that's a lot of paper. It's a lot of, it's not just paper. It's also video. It's also records of every sort that we're required to keep, and so, we, there's just so many different types of media. It's not just paper.
So, I would feel that other probably localities and municipalities have encountered the same thing. Have you seen things that they've done that have helped you, or do you think that there's ways that we could improve our storage, and, you know, maybe regional storage? I don't know if there's any such thing like that, but the...
Going to, well, we do have regional storage, but regional storage, of course, is very expensive. We do that for a emergency backup and disaster recovery plan, but that, they, we can't afford to pay somebody to keep our documents forever. And fact is, the law states that we are required to do that. We have to keep them forever, certain types of documents. And so, so to answer your question, yes, we are employing the very best technology available with hyper-convergence storage. It is the best. It is what's considered to be the desirable footprint to be in. And so, that's what we've quoted. And it is, it is scalable. What we're buying won't go to waste. We can scale it up. So, our goal was to purchase the very best system we could, so that as we grow, we can add to it without having to start from scratch, which is really, I guess, the circumstance of technology that you deal with on occasion, so.
Have we ever stored any videos in like a Dropbox or anything like that? And anyone ever do that?
We, I can't speak for anyone. I can say that the IT department does not store anything in Dropbox, ever. And as far as I am concerned, I would consider it a personal policy that it should not be done.
I'm just wondering if anybody stored anything in the Town of Abingdon from a Dropbox?
I am sure people have used Dropbox, but when I see people use Dropbox, my advice is always the same. Please stop using Dropbox. We have share file.
Did we ever pay for anything like that before?
Years ago, I know there was the use by some departments, and how those were paid for would have to be a departmental thing.
Do you know when that was?
No, ma'am.
Years ago?
Yeah, I can say it was years ago, and I can say that the people that I know that were excessive users are no longer with the town, so I can't speak any more than that.
Okay, thank you.
Floyd, I didn't hear you clearly. When is the first payment due on this?
It'll be next fiscal year, which will be July of 2018.
So, it's not, it's not in our budget this year, but...
It's not in the budget this year. It's designed to be paid for next year, and the years following.
Five years, right?
Five years, right. Five years, right. So.
Well, Mr. Kelly, Mr. Humphries had a good question. I'm gonna let him ask.
Yeah, my question was, is can we encumber a future council with a loan that won't take place or be drawn off of until next year, and which will be in another fiscal year? Can we do, can we encumber them?
You, this council will be the council that adopts the budget for next year.
Okay.
I do have one more question, if you don't mind. There's an email that we got for FOIA requests, and now these FOIA requests are gonna come through to the Town Council. And my question is, I know that Ms. Eisenhower stated to Citizen or someone of media, I'm not, I think that's correct, that this server was decommissioned. Could you explain that, about decommissioning, and what, like, what, what happened?
I can't explain the choice of the word decommission. I can tell you that the server, that as far as I can tell, based on what you're telling me, is no longer in use.
It's no longer in use. Why is it no longer in use?
Because new servers were put into place.
Okay.
And new, new...
Was there something wrong with it?
New systems. It was ancient. Yeah. It was old and worn out and needed to be replaced, and the software was excessively old.
Okay. And, well, I was gonna ask this question, because it has to do with storage. And also, could you tell me what happens when you want to retrieve that information from the decommissioned equipment? Because according to Ms. Eisenhower, it was gonna be very costly for the IT department to go in. So what concerns me is if we can't access, you know, the storage now with that decommissioned equipment, what are we gonna do to retrieve that information? How can we do that without being very costly?
Honestly, not knowing what information you're speaking of, all I can tell you is that I would point you to the Library of Virginia to see the records retention requirements for the Finance Department. And I can tell you that most of the, the data for accounts receivable and accounts payable only has a three-year retention requirement. So there are exceptions, but I don't know what specifically was being asked for. I can just tell you that what is required, we still have.
Okay. Let me see if there's any other questions. So the procedure is just, ask the Library of the Virginia Records about retention, and what is your all's procedure to try to look for this, this information? How does that, how does that work?
If it's, if it's information that's been retained, based on the schedule produced by the Library of Virginia, then we go and we take whatever time is necessary to recover it. But it wasn't, was information on a very old platform. So although we still have it, we still possess it, we can still access information based on availability of what's been kept. And again, I don't know specifically what, what was being asked for. I can just tell you that all information that falls within the Library of Virginia retention requirement has been kept.
Okay, and it is accessible, and you can get it.
Absolutely.
How do you retrieve it?
Well, it takes work, and it takes time, because it's on an old platform, but we do have it.
Okay.
And again, I'm talking in the hypothetical here, because I know nothing about what kind of information was requested. I, all I have is what you asked me before, so I don't...
I just sent you an email, like, downstairs, so you've not had time to look at it. Okay. And that's all I have for storage.
Okay. Anyone else? Right. Council, what's your pleasure?
Well, it's, it's, it's something we've planned, and the research has been done, and we're looking at the low bid, basically, so make a motion, go ahead and approve with this financing plan.
Authorize it.
Yeah, authorize you to sign any documents necessary to make this happen.
I'll second.
Okay. Any other discussion? So it's to authorize Mr. Kelly to sign any documents in relation to First Bank and Trust for the amount of $192,000 for hyper-converged server storage upgrade.
Can I ask one question, or are you closed?
Sure.
You got the three bids, right?
It's a state contract.
State contract, okay, okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Roll call.
I'm Mr. Craig.
Uh.
Ms. Patterson.
Aye.
Mr. Howard.
Aye.
Mr. Humphries.
Aye.
Mayor Loeb.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Reports from the Town Manager and the Assistant Town Manager, consideration of appropriation of $5,000 to the Over Mountain Victory Trail Association for the support and development of a master plan for OVNHT from Abingdon, Virginia to Elizabethan, Tennessee, Greg Kelly, Town Manager.
I'll give a brief background. Mr. Humphries may want to jump in on this. He's probably more well-versed in what the trail actually is than I. But last fiscal year, when Mr. Johnson was still here in, as the Director of Planning, he brought this before us, and it was indicated at that time that various localities along that section of trail from here to Elizabethan were asked to contribute $5,000. One or more of the council members inquired in terms of whether or not the money needed to be appropriated at that time, and it was determined that there was no rush at that time, and council would hold off on appropriating the funds until they were specifically asked. Last month, I was asked to sign off on the agreement for the trail, and that's why this is on the agenda for the council to appropriate the $5,000. And I will say from memory that all five of the council members at the time that Mr. Johnson presented this indicated they were in favor of supporting the project.
This is a segmental along the Over Mountain Victory National Historic Trail. It's a National Park Service trail, and it stretches from here to Kings Mountain, South Carolina. During the segmental parts of the trail, which would be from here to Elizabethan, probably Elizabethan to Roan Mountain, there are, there will be compiled a whole series of everything from accommodations to other places to see, sites to see, routes to travel, biking routes, walking routes, hiking routes, the whole plethora of stuff. And the cost, and the original cost estimate was around $100,000, and the Park Service was gonna give at least 50%. In this case, they're gonna give appropriate $65,000 to this if we appropriate $50,000, and that is the localities from here all the way down to Sycamore Shoals or Elizabethan, which consists of, I think, there's a, there's a signatory that you all will see in your packet of all, all the groups that have signed off on it, and to approve the money. For, you know, for a bang for your buck, this is a really a kind of a regional concept that we've all looked for, trying to do some region, some region focus on tourism, and this would directly affect and address that for probably a very minimal amount of money. And since that Abingdon is the north trailhead of the Over Mountain Victory National Historic Trail, we're probably gonna get more, a little more bang for your buck out of it than some of the other smaller localities. But that even being said, all of them are gonna get great value from that amount.
Okay, so, Council, what's your pleasure?
I move that we appropriate the $5,000 that we had approved the support of going to the development of the master plan for the Over Mountain Victory National Historic Trail.
And would that be out of council contingency?
Yes, that would come from council contingency, and we would also authorize Greg Kelly to sign that and execute any documents that needed to be signed, because there's a signatory for you to do.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to authorize $5,000 from council contingency to the Over Mountain Victory National Historic Trail for the development of a master plan. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Roll call, please.
I'm Mr. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Patterson.
Aye.
Mr. Howard.
Aye.
Mr. Humphries.
Aye.
And Mayor Loeb.
Aye.
Consideration of adoption of revised bylaws for Tourism Advisory Committee, Jenny?
It's got a point. Number two, no, two, yeah. You're number three.
Oh, it's one. Oh, I see. I'm sorry. Consideration of appropriation for the Abingdon Muster Grounds Music Group. Mr. Rick Humphries.
Yeah, and I will call, and I'd like to call on Michael Henningson to come forward and talk about what has taken place. This is a group that's, he is working, Michael came forward. This is a group that's worked very hard. Michael has to assemble a group of fife and drum corps for the Abingdon Muster Grounds. He started out, and for a couple of years, kind of languished with just one or two people. He is now up to...
We had a new member join on Thursday night, so we're up to 10?
And so, and so they have not come to council before for any type of appropriations, even though they are actually a part of the muster grounds, they're, they are outside that purview, and they, and they have, and we'll just briefly tell them some of the events that you've done lately in support of the muster grounds and for the Town of Abingdon.
On Memorial Day, there were other groups that were involved in doing flag raisings or parades outside of Abingdon, leaving the Veterans Memorial Park vacant. And we stepped forward to do the flag raising ceremony on Memorial Day. At the Sinking Springs Cemetery, every year, the Daughters of the American Revolution present awards to their essay contest winners on the Fourth of July. We presented the ceremonial music to march in the honor guard and to perform taps. Every year, we host or participate in the Call to Arms at the muster grounds, where over 2,000 Washington County students come through and get to learn about the role that young people would have played during the Revolutionary War. They wouldn't necessarily have carried arms, but they would have had the essential role of announcing all of the duty procedures, all of the actions during the day. And so we take the role of commemorating the role of the Over Mountain Militia, educating the public, as well as educating the students. The children that we have involved, we've got over, well, we've got five kids involved under the age of 13. The director, former director of the Williamsburg Fife and Drum Corps, John Moon, I had the pleasure of meeting him just a few weeks ago, he said that the purpose of a corps like this is not just to train musicians to entertain, but to raise up citizens. These children learn how to march. They learn how to clean a uniform. They learn how to take care of an instrument. They learn how to follow commands, and they learn about our particular history. The unique history in Abingdon that I'm finding, I have family that's involved. Four little children that are buried in Sinking Springs Cemetery that I just discovered are part of my family tree. This fife and drum group has grown from just two or three of us to a body of 10, 12-plus volunteer moms who show up. And we need a place to rehearse because of economic changes. The place we have been meeting is now gonna charge us monthly rent. And with that, the National Park Service gave us a grant of $5,000 to purchase brand-new instruments. And so as these young people that you saw today master their instruments, they will be playing on professional-level instruments to be able to present the history of Abingdon to the community. So our request really is to help us protect this investment of the instruments that we've gotten through a secure location, through liability insurance, and to help us have a consistent place where we can rehearse that is convenient to the town center. We already noticed this with the Plum Alley Days. We had a few necessary items that had been forgotten, and fortunately, our offices are only a couple of blocks away. And that made accessing what we need to do our job. Commemorate what this town is about and what was fought for, and to educate the public as to the value that we play, and then motivate others. Like little Jaren, Jaren is a sophomore at King University, and she came to the Fourth of July. She heard us play. She actually plays the fiddle and was interested, well, she was so motivated, she, she came to the muster grounds and bought her own fife, she actually bought two of them, and showed up at rehearsal Thursday night and said, "Give me all the music you can take. I'm up for the challenge." And so we appreciate the help that you can give us to continue this program and to help it grow. We're forging relationships with the Old Guard Fife and Drum Corps of the U.S. Army, and I have been invited to be a registered volunteer with Colonial Williamsburg Fife and Drum Corps. So as we can grow this corps, we can extend from beyond just Abingdon to across the state to represent our town and to represent what the Over Mountain Militia did. So appreciate you considering helping us continue this work. Any questions?
Well, how much money?
We're requesting $2,000, and what that represents is $100 a month rent for a year, $550 for liability insurance to cover $5,000 worth of instruments, and about $250 to put shelves so we don't have to stack these beautiful instruments on the floor, keep them up, and be able to handle them, to protect them and preserve them. So we're requesting $2,000.
And have you found a location?
Yes, we've actually been meeting in the annex of Holston Mountain Artisans. Things were rather loosely arranged, and with their change in situation, they're having to tighten up everything. And so they're asking for formal lease agreements and liability insurance to protect the property.
Okay. How much is your rent?
$100 a month.
$100 a month, okay. You may have said that.
The, and I, and I know, and must, I don't know off the top of your head, you're trying to come up with stuff, but you had, you did Plum Alley Days, you all, you performed at Plum Alley Days, your group did. There are many, many more that you didn't mention. I, I don't know if you took your mind. I know it had in mind, because I've been at most of them that you've been at, so...
You were up at the cabin, I think, weren't you, at Plum Alley Days?
Yes, we were at the cabin at Plum Alley Days, the, the Fourth of July DAR celebration. We do living history programs at the muster grounds, the flag raising at, on Memorial Day. This is a fairly new group, and these are our uniforms right now. So we are growing and building and nurturing them into a corps that does represent the town. The muster grounds has hosted us for the Call to Arms. Like I said, over 2,000 kids get to hear presentations, as well as the living history weekends during the summer.
And council might like to know, they're, they might come back and ask for some money next year for some uniforms or additional uniforms, for different types of uniforms. I think I found them $3,000 that may will, will span the tide until that time to where they might be able to have some frontier, the white, if you've ever seen Colonial Williamsburg in their militia outfits that are white. That would only require a frock coat versus anything else, and I think I've found the money for 3,000, that $3,000. So that would, it would have to come to council and ask for that this year.
We'll be sitting $3,000, but here's your little nest egg to start, okay? I just wanted to donate that to you all. You all.
Anything else, Council? So do I have a motion?
I'll move that we appropriate $2,000 from council contingency to fund the Abingdon Muster Grounds Music Group.
Okay. Do I have a second? A second, pal. Any more discussion?
I, I certainly admire what you've done.
No, what you're doing, and really hope we can support you, but I don't know, my question, I guess this should be to Greg, is there, is this gonna come out of our council contingency or...
That's what I just said.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
I, I do have a concern that, I certainly would like to vote yes, but I'm concerned that, Kathy, where we stop, you know, we kind of have a policy, I believe Greg told me, we kind of have a policy that says if it's not in the budget for this year, we normally don't do it unless it's an emergency or something like that. We, you know, we just didn't give the little league any money. Uh, I, I'm just concerned about picking and choosing and not having a policy.
This is actually, this is actually our group. This is the Town of Abingdon's group. This isn't the Little League, I mean, this is the muster ground, the ones that are under the town, we just haven't funded them. We missed a lot of funding 'cause they didn't ask for it.
So...
This isn't really an independent group.
Is this a mistake that we made or something?
Well, it wasn't a mistake. It's just that they hadn't had the need for it in the past, or they hadn't asked for it, even though they're the muster, you know, they said, they represent the town in the town events, so they're a town. I don't, I don't know if I want to say a town, it's the Town of Abingdon, it's like having a, I don't know, an engineer or engineer or whatever.
We just got the grant from the Park Service less than two months ago.
So...
We, and the changes with Holston Mountain Artisans occurred less than two months ago. So, we really haven't felt the need up until now, uh, so we haven't approached anybody.
I understand.
This really shouldn't have been the muster, this shouldn't have been in the muster ground budget.
So, you don't think we're establishing a precedent of going into our contingency?
Well, no, this shouldn't have been in the muster ground budget. Oh.
I think that this group, you know, what you referred to as the Little League, and I think you all saw that we got something from the tennis group, we've had something from the choir, we've had requests from other, um, extracurricular activities from school-aged children. I think the difference is that we have, we have put in the budget things that would promote tourism. And the muster grounds group, um, is part of that whole, um, uh, even that weekend, that September weekend that we have.
So, we'd, the town benefits financially for them, okay, I got it.
And so, I think that's the difference, is that this group works in conjunction with the, all the events that we have in the muster grounds.
Okay.
Well, they are the muster grounds.
Right, they are.
They are the muster grounds.
Muster grounds music.
We just didn't, we just didn't get it, 'cause it, it was just much my fault as anybody's supposed to.
I just, I just don't want us to be in a position of...
Yeah, they'll be in the budget next year.
Picking and choosing, you know.
Right, you'll be in the budget next year.
I think Wayne's got a good, a good point, uh, and it's something we probably need to discuss further, but, uh, you know, we're, we're pretty well inundated with a lot of requests anymore. You're cut back from another source, you're, you're, it kind of does. I think we ought to look at that a little further.
Well, I can see that it would benefit us for tourism, so I, I, well, I'm all right with that. I just want to make sure that we don't pick it, be accused of picking and choosing, and...
Right.
And we need to have some criteria for that, okay?
But next year, they will be in the budget. They'll be in the budget under the muster grounds.
And, and Mr. Craig, you accurately did state, council has adopted a policy in the past that after the budget is in place for outside entities, that it is not to, they're to come to me, and I determine whether or not it's an emergency to be put on the agenda for you all to...
Come on.
And our minutes, actually, I had him look it up after we got so many requests recently. And it says that, um, that the council hasn't supported travel for other organizations, but suggested the group create a flyer that could be distributed, asking for donations and flyers for events. They have plans that could be shared on Wolf Whistling for us to help with those events. And so, that's kind of the difference in what we've done, is if they're traveling, we don't see that as, as bringing in tourism dollars. And if they're, if they're sponsoring a fundraiser or an event here, we do see that that...
Okay, as I said, I'm, I'm all for it, but I, I just, we've got to watch our budget.
Okay. All right, any more discussion? So, we have a motion and a, did we get a motion for two thousand dollars? So, we have a motion to give the Abingdon Muster Ground Group two thousand dollars, and...
From council?
This Patterson's second.
From council contingency.
From council contingency. Okay. Roll call, please.
Uh, Ms. Craig.
Uh.
Ms. Patterson.
Aye.
Mr. Howard.
Aye.
Mr. Humphries.
Aye.
Mayor Lo.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Consideration of appropriation, uh, or adoption of the revised bylaws for the Tourism Advisory Committee, Jane Dearing, Director of Tourism.
Good evening, thanks for having us here tonight. The Tourism Advisory Committee, just for those of you who may not know, is, uh, an official channel of information, it's an exchange, exchange between retailers, restaurateurs, bed and breakfast, hotel, attractions, museums, history, historic, uh, facilities, so that we can all learn together what trends would be, what needs there might be, and then we also have cooperative efforts and make sure that duplication of dollars and complementary, um, efforts are being made. So, just wanted to say that before we went into the changes. And over the past few weeks, they've looked, taken a look specifically at the composition of members of the Tourism Advisory Committee, and they are recommending some changes. The changes most notably are to, we used to re- require a representative from Hartwood. They would like to remove that requirement. They also had a requirement of one representative from, from Virginia Higher Education Center. They'd like to change that to any higher education facility. The other changes, um, have been to ex-officio members. They want to move, um, Abingdon Main Street or representative to a voting member, and they want to move from ex-officio, a Chamber of Commerce or representative, to a voting member. And they did that on the basis that those two entities are stakeholders. They have the same concerns and the same needs that all of the other entities do. The remaining ex-officio members would not have debating or, uh, voting rights, and they would be a town council member or representative, and currently Mayor Lo is the first, and Vice Mayor Humphries is the second there, and a representative of an Abingdon, from the Abingdon District of the Washington County Board of Supervisors. So, that's a summary of the changes. Any questions?
No, I would just like to add that the reason the Hartwood representative is being removed is not because we don't value Hartwood, it's because they have not attended the meetings in the last probably five years.
And I'm glad you said that, because just today, um, a young man named Ryan, I can't remember his last name, came by. He works for the services that run Hartwood, and he expressed an interest in coming. So, he's going to come tomorrow's meeting, because it is a public meeting, we welcomed him. The fact that he works with groups, um, I know our group's salesperson, there, there'll be some paddico in their needs. And if anybody from Hartwood decided that they wanted to come on a regular basis, we still have three at-large slots. And at this time, the, the committee would like to leave one at-large slot unassigned. So, at any given time, when a great candidate comes along, we've got the flexibility to get them around the table. I'm glad you brought that up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Council? What's your pleasure?
I'll move that we approve the revised bylaws.
I second that.
Okay. Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Patterson.
Aye.
Mr. Howard.
Aye.
Mr. Humphries.
Aye.
Mayor Lo.
Aye. Resolutions, there are none, old business, work session, agenda items not covered during work session meeting. And I think we had one.
We did. Um, if I can pull my... Pull this back up for a second. It's downloading. If I'd heard nine two thousand dollars would get us any faster working machine.
And, uh, the, the discussion we had downstairs and what we talked about was the, the, uh, the ground penetrating radar, there'd been a request, there'd been an RFP requested for the ground penetrating radar. There was discussion down there, and, uh, Mr. Kelly wanted to know if we wanted an additional restraints put on, uh, DHR, uh, if they approved this or go with their recommendations. Uh, that being said, um, I wanted to move, make a motion to rescind the RFP for the ground penetrating radar, um, contingent on the DHR recommendation.
May I, may I say something?
Sure.
It, it would act, the permit is actually through the Corps of Civil Engineers.
Right.
So, I'm assuming that that...
Actually, that would be, yeah, well, DHR would have to sign off on it before the Corps, if it would issue the permit. So, then it would be actually, I guess the motion should be that, um...
Upon issuance of...
That, yeah.
And would you specify the location, please?
The location is the Meadows Project.
Do I have a second?
I'll say the motion.
Any discussion?
I guess that would, uh, take off the table, the possibility that, uh, someone goes out and looks on, looks at the site and, uh, thinks there's additional work that needs to be done. Uh, what you're saying is, you're going to accept what's been done already, is that right?
No, no, we would accept what DHR, DHR is going to have to, would have, would have to agree with that. We're going to have to go by DHR eventually, we'll have to go by DHR, what their request is.
I don't understand why you keep saying it, but that's okay.
I'm sorry, say this, please.
All we have to do is meet the minimum requirements of, of DHR. Uh, we're talking about, we have some citizens that are concerned that, that, and we haven't had a chance to read the book, I have, that they've made, I, I'm not sure that I would be satisfied with that, I don't, just meeting their minimum requirements. That's my only problem. Why don't we leave it, why don't we leave the matter open and let's read the D, uh, DHR report, see if we're satisfied, did it cover slave graves? I've heard people say it doesn't say anything about slave graves. So, what's wrong with that? If we can just...
Well, I, I agree, well, this would not, not, this would not close it. This would not close it. If the, you know, you were just saying that if the permit was issued, if the permit's issued, that doesn't preempt any other work from being done.
I, I agree with that. Here, I, I don't know what you're, exactly what you're saying, does that mean we're never going to do an RFP? We've already approved that, I'm, I'll be against that.
Well, okay, that's fine, but that, that, my motion would be that we rescind the RFP for that, uh, for that.
You'll rescind that action, okay.
But you could always look at it, you know.
Yeah.
Well, we've recommended that, um, Kathy Shear and her group go out at no cost to the Town of Abingdon, again, to go look and see if there's any graves there. And I still don't understand what the problem is, if they're, um, wanting to do this for free, what is the problem? You know, I don't want to dig someone's remains up and be responsible for that. And I think it's a very, it's a very touchy situation, subject, but I want to be respectful to people that are buried there, and I think that that should be our interest as well.
If someone's buried.
If someone is buried there, that's correct. We've been told, if you'll recall, in a meeting back on, in twenty fifteen, I think it was October the twenty seventh, during the Planning Commission meeting and the Town Council meeting joint, that Mr. Grossclose said that there were graves up there and the gravestones were no longer there. And that's what is on the record, and I just want to make that clear. I do respect people that are deceased and their remains. And I'm totally for somebody going over there and checking that out and making sure that it's not there. And also, I haven't seen the second report from S and M E, and I'd like to see that.
Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Craig.
No.
Mrs. Patterson.
No.
Mr. Howard.
Aye.
Mr. Humphries.
Aye.
Mayor Lo.
Aye. Okay.
So, you have somebody willing to go with...
You're out of order, sir. You're out of order.
To do something for the three.
You're out of order.
And you're going to cover that?
Mr. Sullivan, will you please remove, please?
It's, it goes on like that.
It goes on like this.
Mr. Tripachoni, you're out of order. Miss Moore, you're out of order. Any more out of order, and we will close the mea, we will stop the meeting. Miss Moore, that's the second call. The third call, the third call, Mr., I'm going to ask Chief Sullivan to remove you.
Please. Please remove me. Have you called out, "Oh, yeah"?
Okay, we are down to old. We have any more old business? Okay. We have appointments to boards and committees. We have an appointment to fill the term of Jane Dearing, who is not eligible to serve, and we have an appointment to fill the unexpired term of Dr. French Moore. If council so desires, close session, pursue it to the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty as amended, section two dot two dash three seven one one A one, for the purpose of considering applications to fill the positions on the Planning Commission. It says the Tourism Advisory Committee, is that a misprint?
That, that will be the new member.
Unless you want to use that for the, I must be clairvoyant whenever I think, if you needed to do the tag on it.
So, Tourism Advisory Committee and the Virginia House Small Business Incubator.
Mayor Lo, oh, I'm sorry. Before we make a motion, I, I would like to say that we haven't given, been given any, um, applications for any of the, the, the folks that you put up here on the email today. And I only got this email today to know who was applying for the incubator, um, board. So, I would just make a suggestion that we have those applications so that we know who's qualified and, you know, not do the close session meeting at this point.
Ms. Patterson, on your July council packet in L one, um, we have the matrix, and the matrix is never put, the name is never put on the, on the, um...
Yeah, I have the matrix, yeah.
Until they have submitted an application to the council. So, in your previous council packets, there should be those applications. The new applications are always in the month that they are submitted. So, we have seen all of the applications for all of the folks who have applied for all of these boards and commissions.
What was the latest year on, on those, on the, the last, the folks that you sent?
Correct, correct, if I'm wrong, but, w- w- this Rosenbaum, but we made a, a policy that we kept those, uh, applications for at least a year, is that correct?
I believe it was at least a year, but we've just been adding to the list.
We haven't.
The list I sent you all by email today went back to twenty fifteen, Ms. Patterson would not have had access to that.
Yeah, I wouldn't have had that access, that's what I was saying, so I don't have all that.
Right. Now the ones added.
And I'd like to have, you know, the applications, I think that would be fair.
Delay it would be...
Just delay it.
Yeah, if it won't hurt your board, and they...
Yeah, if it's not going to hurt your board at all, I, I hope not. Would that affect anything?
If you would like for me to leave the podium, I will, I will leave the podium and speak about the incubator, if you would like for me to do that, but if the council would like to just delay this until another, um, meeting, I'd be happy to do that.
Delay it.
Yeah, let's just delay it.
Opportunity to just leave the...
Okay.
And also, is there any opportunities for the folks that did not know this was advertised to put another application in because, or not another, but an application for this position?
We can advertise it again.
You can advertise it again, because there was a lot of, well, several, um, folks that I talked to that didn't know it was on the website.
Right.
And for those of y'all that all know, um, a lot of things are put on advertisement on our website, so be sure to check the website frequently. our website, so be sure to check the website frequently. Usually, I believe it's on the front page, so just be aware, check it every month and see what's up for grabs on the committees. We'd like to have y'all serve.
Okay, so we're back to the Planning Commission now, we table the division. I don't see any need to go into a closed session for the Planning Commission. I have an, I'd like to move that we, I'd like to nominate Ramsey White for a planning commissioner. Ramsey White has already completed his training for a planning commissioner and graduate planning training. It would save that money for sending him off to school. I thought that he might be a better candidate for Historic Preservation Review Board, but there's no, not anything coming up anytime soon for that. I think he'd be a better servant here where he's already got his planning commissioner, commission done.
Mr. Howard, do I have a second?
I still don't think we have all the applications that everybody needs to see, you know. I'm not gonna say-
Is that for planning commissioner?
Right.
Okay.
I, I think we should delay it until all members are satisfied that they had an opportunity to study.
I'd like so too.
If I need to, I'll make that in the form of motion.
That's okay, it's been, it's been like two months, I thought we-
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
Now, to train Mr. Jett or Mr. Elmore, it would be, we have a thousand dollars put aside for schooling, correct? How much will it cost for the schooling?
I'd have to get the exact number, but we should have enough in the budget to be able to get one member trained.
I can answer the question because I had to reimburse the talent, all of my expenses. Of course, I didn't put my meals on or anything like that, but it was, it was thirteen hundred dollars.
Does that include your, that include your lodging too?
Yes.
But not meals?
Yeah, I didn't put my meals on there, so whatever the meals were called, it's not a lot of money.
I don't know if this helps or not, but I usually don't eat any meals when we go to VML or whatever, and I'm willing to contribute that money to, to train someone. So I don't, I don't eat the meals at VML, I don't, I pay for them myself. Also, transportation is also paid by myself, so that money can go to training.
You might wanna get your training, you know, to get your commissioner training, you might wanna do that, 'cause that would be a good thing for me. I think all of us have our commissioner training except for you, so you might wanna do that. Be a good opportunity.
Okay, so no further business, I will call this meeting adjourned.
Hey, wait a minute, Kathy, I've got a report to make.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I miss it?
It's not on the page.
It's not on the agenda, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, it is, too. That's under N.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry.
It's in the past season.
Sure, no, I'm glad to.
I rescind that.
I have a written report that has passed out.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
There you go. No way down.
Mayor, we've had somewhat of unfortunate thing occur, and I, I've studied about it and thought about it, and so I've made a report on it, and my report has, I'm an engineer, so you look at the facts related to the problem, you analyze them, and then you make recommendations. All of those are in the report. The facts are that there were three le, the facts are that there were three letters involved in this incident. One was a, a letter from our town attorney to the Circuit Court, and another one was from the Town Council, excuse me, three members of Town Council, three members of, three members of Town Council, two, Ms. Eisenhower, giving her direction, and the other one was a reply from Sage Johnson. I've studied all of those, read them carefully, and I, I thought about it, and I thought it's important to establish in my mind that we had an alternative to that, because we have been to a seminar, and so that's listed as a fact, teaching us how to deal with these problems. And also, there are some unresolved issues remaining. The Circuit, the judge indicated that we didn't file the, not me, but the, the filing was not correct, that Ms. Patterson wasn't served. So I've analyzed this, and I'd like to read it for the Town Council. In the first sentences, first two sentences of the town attorney's letter, she represents to the judge that three individual council members requested that she contact the court and convey issues of concern which are apparently arising in part from Cindy Patterson's personal life and attached letter sent to her by the majority of three. The letter from the majority of three directed the town attorney to correspond with the Circuit Court. In giving this direction to the attorney via correspondence, the three council members made a decision in private. Cindy Patterson nor the general public were given, I, were given any notice. This is an obvious violation of the Freedom of Information Act. The three council members, by the same correspondence, authorized the attorney to obtain information as needed regarding Cindy Patterson and request a written opinion from the Circuit Court. This is another violation of the Freedom of Information Act. Cindy Patterson and I are duly elected members of Town Council and should be informed and included in all decisions made by, by the council. Somehow, the training and information received from our seminar got lost. Nowhere is it suggested that the town involve the Circuit Court in Town Council business such as this. To the contrary, the theme of the seminar was, come let us reason together. The town attorney's letter to the court gives the appearance more of a backroom maneuver by the majority of three to smear the good name of Cindy Patterson than, than it does an effort to resolve the issues. The attorney's letter is filled with unsubstantiated charges against Ms. Patterson and uses matters currently being litigated as evidence to substantiate the charges. This is clearly a malicious and unjust action. Judge Johnson replied in his letter that the court would take, the court would take no action on the matter because Ms. Patterson had not been properly served. In other words, in our country, the accused have the right to face their accuser. His ruling is inconsistent, I mean, is, is consistent with the training given at the seminar. Recommendations, that the Town Council attempt to undo this unfortunate undertaking by issuing an apology to the court for involving it in town affairs and request that the filing be removed from the docket. Further, that an apology letter be sent to Ms. Patterson for the intrusion into her personal life and the failure to confront her with the charges. That the Town Council proceed with the resolution of the, of the issues by procedures recommended in the seminar and use the information we received therein.
I have a, a council report-
Can I answer Wayne's?
Sure, go ahead.
Go ahead and answer Wayne, what Wayne said.
I'm gonna make a motion, and then you can discuss it.
Well, I was gonna, well, I was gonna just reply on what you said.
Well, you can do that when I make a motion. I move that the Town Council accept this report, file it, include it in the minutes of this meeting, and proceed as recommended in the report.
I second that.
Discussion.
I'd like just to address Mr. Craig, and I probably shouldn't address this, it should be impersonal, but shame, shame on you, Mr. Craig.
Shame, shame on you, shame, shame on you for going behind my back.
Here's, here's, let me, I will tell you what happened, I will tell you what happened. Mr. Craig, as well as I, became aware that Cindy Patterson was charged with assault and battery. She was served those papers, and we were concerned about it as council, because she also had a carry permit. And we were worried about things that she could bring a gun in here or anything else that could happen to any of us.
Goodness gracious.
Well, in today's climate, in today's climate, you never know. In today's climate, you never know.
What does Cindy Patterson have to do with what we as a council, a council should do to deal with the matter?
Okay, so here's what, so here's what happened. So Mr. Craig called me up and said, Rick, please don't bring, please, please don't-
Wait a minute, I didn't call you up in the discussion.
No, no, I'm sorry, we talked outside the council doors.
Right.
And he said, please don't bring this up in open council. And I said, Wayne, I don't, I don't intend to bring this up in open council. He said, we can do this in closed session. I said, we don't need to do it in closed session.
No, I didn't say do anything, I just said, please don't, don't-
As I remember, as I remember, I was, he said, do not, well, can I go ahead? You spoke a second ago, Wayne. You spoke a second ago.
Okay, go ahead.
And so the only thing I did was I said, I said, no, I don't plan to bring it up in closed session, Mr. Craig, I'm not gonna bring it up there, but we do need to know what happens if Cindy's found guilty, and what, and what repercussions it could have to us as a council, and how, and what would happen. That's why, and, and I told Wayne that also at the same time. And so I told him exactly what that was and what that we needed to do. So what we were trying to do is to get, we were trying to get something as a way to proceed, and that's exactly what was said, there was nothing else said to Wayne, and Wayne and I talked about this.
No, we did not, I'm sorry, we did not talk about that. You asked me if she had been served, and I said, I heard that she had been served, but she certainly hasn't been convicted, so what are you talking about? What does that have to do with what we're talking about? The guidance we received is to confront her with, with the situation and, and discuss it with her. That's, that's what the guidance says. That's the first step. If, the second step is to censure her if she doesn't behave, if you think she's not behaving, that's all I'm pointing out to you.
Well, in the Bible, the Bible says to go to the person and talk to them about it, but you don't do that either.
So you follow your own advice as far as going to the person and talking to them about it, because Richard Macbeth, under the Freedom of Information Act, received a recording from Historic Preservation Review Board that you recorded secretly.
No, I didn't record that secretly.
In a closed session.
That's not true, that is not true.
That was in closed session.
No, ma'am, that was not closed session.
And, and for the last year, Ms. Patterson, for the last year, Ms. Patterson has been in-
This is what we should have been doing, Kathy, and my point is, let's follow the guidance, Cindy. You and Cindy can have a private conversation.
No, sir, we're worried about Cindy's behavior. She's been in close contact with attorneys at VML, questioning-
I have questioned you all, yes, ma'am.
Questioning, without, without conversing with any of us about any of the things that she was concerned about, especially related to the Town Council. So-
Are we not able to do that?
It says the council members named above had, now, I want you to hear this.
I want to know if we're able to contact Virginia-
Have requested that I convey to you their concerns for safety and well-being of appointees, staff, residents, and visitors, as well as themselves. Having expressed such concerns and feelings of apprehension during council meetings and work sessions, we submit our plea not to seek a judgment. We didn't ask for a judgment, to seek your aid and guidance in best addressing this situation so that we may resume the transaction of the public business in the town of Abingdon, Virginia. At no time did we ask for prosecution, we asked for guidance in how to handle all of this dismay that we've had for the last year. The Freedom of Information Act has revealed all of the strategies and, and goings-on for the last year that were, were aimed specifically more at me than, than most anybody. But however, we didn't ask for prosecution, Mr. Craig, we asked for guidance from the judge.
I didn't say, you did ask for prosecution.
And you're not a lawyer or a trial either, I'm not in the trial.
We went to our town attorney, which is where you're supposed to go as a council member. That's what we paid her for.
Well, that's not what our training said.
Well, we were also concerned-
Okay, that's enough. I call for a motion, roll call, please.
Mr. Craig.
What's the roll call for? We've already went through like a-
Mr. Craig made a motion, would you like to read it, Mr. Craig? Make a motion.
Oh, yeah, I did, I seconded that motion, yes. There was a lot of discussion.
If you'll read that motion again, please.
Sure. I move that the Town Council accept this report, file it, include it in the minutes of this meeting, and proceed as recommended in, in the report. Would you like me to read the recommendations again, too?
Okay, roll call.
Hi, Mr. Craig.
Aye.
Mrs. Patterson.
Aye.
Mr. Howard.
I'm gonna vote no, but I'm gonna look at these recommendations and get with the other two, two members that we've been accused of and see what we wanna do.
Mr. Humphries.
No.
Mayor Lowe.
No. Thank you.
I'd like to read my council report as well. I have a report here, I made a press release this evening to WJHL, WCYB, and to the Bristol Herald Courier, and the press release is as such. Hello, my name is Mary Cindy, Mary C. Cindy Patterson, Abingdon, Virginia Town Council Woman. Circuit Court Judge Sage Johnson has recently informed me, oh, and I'd like this written in the record, please, I'm gonna need this written in the record. Let me start again, please. Hello, my name is Mary C. Cindy Patterson, Abingdon, Virginia Town Council Woman. Circuit Court Judge Sage Johnson has recently informed me of an attempt by three Town Council Members, Mayor Kathy Lowe, Vice Mayor Rick Humphries, and Councilman Bob Howard, to secretly communicate with the Circuit Court in an attempt to discredit me. The three council members instructed Town Attorney Deborah Eisenhower to dig up personal details of my divorce proceedings as part of that effort. Then, at the direction of the three council members, the town attorney put her findings in a letter, and then she sent it to the court. In her letter, the town attorney also invited the court to contact her ex parte if the court had any questions. I'm providing a copy of those written communications to the press, which I've already done, and I've already given those to the council earlier. Attachment one of Deborah Eisenhower's letter, which is included in your package, makes clear that the attempt to influence the judge was the result of a secret collaboration of the three Town Council Members purporting to take an official action of the Town Council. I was kept in the dark about this, and as was Councilman Wayne Craig. In fact, I was not made of their, aware of their actions until Judge Johnson sent me a copy of his response. And obviously, the public was also kept in the dark about this. These actions by three members of the Abingdon Town Council represent an underhanded personal attack on me that violates the council's code of ethics. More importantly, the actions of the three council members constitute an egregious violation of the open meetings provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and were therefore illegal. These violations are yet another instance of the backroom deals that have plagued Abingdon government in recent years. Wayne Craig and I ran and were elected on a platform of ridding Abingdon of these backroom deals and the resulting corruption. I will not be deterred by this vicious personal attack from what I was elected to do. I want the citizens of Abingdon to know that I will not be intimidated by this, and I, that I, along with fellow Councilman Wayne Craig, will continue to fight for open and honest government for the citizens of Abingdon. If you have any questions, if you have any questions, you can please contact my attorney, Barry Proctor, and thank you.
Enough, enough, enough. We're having no more shows.
Mr. Humphries.
I'll sit with Mr. Howard, if you have a question.
Mr. Howard?
Well, I've been at this thirty-one years. Hopefully, I can make it through this next year, if I can, I don't know, but I'm certainly not gonna run again, I'll say that right now, so y'all can clap on that if you want to. Thank you, thank you. But I've always tried to be honest and open in everything I've done in that, that ticked the point, period of time. Next year, I'll be sixty-four, I've been thirty-two years. That's half my life I've given to this council. And this last year has been awful, terrible. Maybe y'all are happy about it, I don't know. It's been, it's been tough, really tough. That's all I gotta say.
Mr. Humphries?
Well, Kenny D. left, and Kenny D. and his father and I worked, or grandfather and I worked together, and I was hoping he'd stick around. I want to address it, I went though Kenny comes back and addresses some of the questions and thoughts that he had when he came up here and talked. But it was real interesting, because I think that there is a breakdown in general, I think when you have any contention, you have contentious people, that you have people who become greedy, they want what they want, doesn't matter which side it is, both of them want what they want. Same thing is happening here. And they'll go to extreme, extraordinary means to get this. Ms. Patterson, Councilman Patterson was talking about the backroom deals, about conspiracy, about people going out after some- Ms. Patterson, Councilwoman Patterson, was talking about the backroom deals, about conspiracy, about people going out after someone personally. I thought she was talking about Mayor Lo. I thought she was talking about all the emails that passed back and forth through board supervisors of the county, uh, through, uh, local officials, physicians that are in the town, different things about conspiring about what to do to rid the town of Kathy, uh, and, and as part of the incubator and also as the council. All that information, of course, has been for you, and now we're been, we have been, we have been, the sun has shone in on us so where we can see what has been and what behind backroom antics have been pulled by, by, uh, if not, if Cindy thinks our side, definitely her side. Uh, you can go back and look at it. In fact, those documents probably easily, if you ever had them on, they probably can sell thumb drive so you can see the hundreds of documents, uh, that have gone back and forth and questions that have been told to be asked. So, anyway, but it doesn't show the, the better side of anybody. It doesn't show the, the person who, that we all, I think, would want to be but don't have maybe the guts to be. And that's the people who put out the arguments that you have and live by what, what, what happens and what transpires. We will win at any cost. And I mean, that's obviously in elections that have happened recently. You win at any cost, and you say anything that you want to say. And that's, and that's, you know, uh, is not the best way to go or the better way to go. I haven't been on as long as Bob Howard has been. You know, my mother was on here. I looked at the things that she dealt with and what she dealt with. And I looked at what that they accomplished. And just in what that I've seen that people like when Ed Morgan left here, people in the last, when Kathy, if y'all, if anybody looked at her, talked about what's happened in the last nine years and what's have been accomplished. There's been a great amount accomplished, but all that can be tainted, as we know. All, all of that can be tainted, as we know, by one perceived misdeed. So, you know, we all need to temper what we think and what we say and what are, what comes off our tongues. And if it feels like you're in church, I'm no preacher. And I certainly am, and I'm certainly not a, not a, a church-going person in the sense of going to church every time the doors are open. But I do believe we should treat each other well. We should treat each other as we would want to be treated. And I think you need, we all need to sit back and look and see. I have no reason to lie to you all. I have no reason to lie to anybody. It doesn't benefit me at all. None, zero. Uh, it doesn't benefit me to say, I want to do this and be opened up for every arrow or every sling that wants to be thrown at me. So, I think that in the end, of all of what we do, we need to look at what kind of respect we have for ourselves, for who we are and what we're doing and asking and doing to other people. If you're happy with that, then you're doing the right thing. And if you're not, you need to change, you know? Uh, I personally have done the best I could. I'm like Bob Howard. We have done the best we could. We have, as far as I know, I have told a lie about nothing when I've been on council, you know? But, but that's, you know, that's what I have to live with. I know that. Anyway, um, Mr. D., I hope he comes back so that we can talk about the budget, how long we spend on the budget, how much time it takes to be a councilperson, how many meetings we go to to try to accomplish for the town the best we can for every individual in town, every visual that's sitting here and every individual that chooses not to come here, which is the majority, and sits at home knowing that they, that they feel like that they're in good hands. So, that being said, that's all I need to say.
Kathy, could I say just one thing briefly?
Sure.
I, I agree with not too much of Rick, what Rick said, but what Mr. Howard said. I absolutely agree with. We should be talking to each other. And Greg Kelly will confirm that I'm, I'm concerned about the, uh, the conflict on town council in a way sometimes things erupt. Uh, and I suggested to him that we, we get some professional help as a group and try to work together. The, the advice we got in our training is that that's what we're supposed to do. And, uh, what I object to is going to court and involving a court in town council affairs. I think this is clearly a town council affair.
I'm not gonna say too much. I've tried to stay above the fray. I think one of my favorite sayings from Michelle Obama was, "When they go low, we go high." I will say this. I have been under investigation for one thing or the other for the past year from members of Friends of Abingdon. I have a recording where one of the members of Friends of Abingdon sent to a supervisor that had falsehoods in them about me, my job, and my husband. I have seen mountains of Freedom of Information materials from many people who have turned me in to, um, apparently, they have contacted the Commonwealth's Attorney. And, um, I really don't even know where else. Because I finally stopped reading them. I finally decided that I was not gonna let what you all's actions were affect what I was gonna do. Now, as I said, we asked the judge for guidance. We did not ask for prosecution. We did not ask for censorship. We asked for guidance because we don't know how far to go. We thought when the lawsuit was over that some of this would settle down and maybe we would vote in a democratic fashion, a three-two, and that we would either win or lose. However, we never expected the kind of attacks that we have gotten over the past year because of the loss of a lawsuit. That's all I have to say. Anybody else have anything to say?
Uh, let's dispense with the announcements.
I'm gonna dispense with the announcements, and if there's no further, um, business, I'm gonna call this meeting adjourned.